I was checking. Our numbers cruncher says it's five o'clock and it's right, so. At this time, we'll apply our first budget workshop to order. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to, well, before I turn it over to the county manager, we're going to try to go through, if we can tonight, through the 34 funding groups under the general fund expenditures. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Brian and he's going to lead us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is the start, like you mentioned, the start of our budget work sessions. The first one, our hope is that we are able to get up to education tonight. That will be our goal. And then on the, and if I draw your attention to page one of your budget, that's your schedule. Our hope is tonight that we get through or get up to education and then we'll finish out the general fund Monday night and start the enterprise funds, get through those. And then on Thursday, the 22nd, we'll do, I'm sorry, Tuesday, the 22nd, we'll do service expansions for both inside and outside agencies. And then hopefully on that Thursday next week, we'll have, we'll be looking for you all to give us some direction on how you want to finalize the base. So that's kind of the schedule. We hope to be able to stick to that. If there are questions that arise or, excuse me, if there are additional questions that come after that, please shoot us a note so we can get any information that you might need if we don't already have it. We'd be glad if you could get that. So I guess the first thing I'd like to take you to is the first tab that says pay class plan. Just real quickly to review that with you. This year, our recommended, our recommended positions are 377. You'll see they're broken down by the departments. There are five positions that have been cut out of the budget this year. Three of those are chore worker positions at DSS where as those folks retire, they have not been refilled. We're using, actually contracting those out. We have reduced, the board did that several, a couple of months ago, reduced when we had a tax customer service representative leave through attrition. We didn't fill that position and are going to use a lockbox service. And then the planning department, the planning director position was eliminated and we're going back with the COG using their planning services. Also, you'll see in there, there have been some transfers in the, in the plan. The three positions that, for land records that were under planning are now back underneath tax assessor, which is initially where they were to start with. They spend the majority of their time there, so that's where they need to be. So that was, those moved. So we're down five. And then on page 15, where it talks about the salary and class plan, just to let you know, you had a new salary and classification plan that was done several months ago that Becky Vezie did for you. That is not this plan that you see in the book. This is this year's current plan. The new plan is in your service expansion that you would deal with and look at as to determine whether, how you wanted to handle that. So that's why this is not the new plan. This is the existing plan. So then if we'll move over to the budget summary tab and that's page 28. We'll start off with the revenue neutral.
If I might interrupt you just a second. We're reviewing this. It looks to me like we're going at lightning speed through this thing. So this must pretty well be a done deal. And I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners, do any of you have any intention of changing this, what's been presented?
We're, he's going through it. So anytime you have a question.
No, that's not a question I asked. I didn't ask if you ask questions. I'm sure there's going to be questions. What I ask is, does any commissioner have any intention of adding to or taking away from this budget as it's been presented by the manager?
Yes, sir. I do.
So you're going to make changes?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
So do I.
Okay. Page 20A is the revenue neutral calculation. You've seen this before. It was in the presentation. I sent the actual Excel spreadsheet to each of you that we get from the local government commission. If you look through that, we had plugged in our numbers. It also gave you some instructions on how it's filled out. It gave you some examples. The reason I, the reason I wanted to send that to you was if there were any questions about how the calculations are done, you could click on those Excel cells and it would show you the, the calculation if it didn't, if it wasn't intuitive and made sense to you. So this is the, this is the revenue neutral calculation. You'll see down at the bottom, it shows that it's 57.9 cent, but then you're allowed to take advantage of the .9% increase. So essentially, you take that .719 and you increase it by .9% growth, which is what has been the average growth in the county over the last eight years.
Run that by me again. I didn't catch all that.
Okay. You start at the top and, and what it does is it looks, it calculates the average growth. We take the assessed values that you see in this table. Those come from the audited financial statements. So we go back and look at the audit and we plug in those numbers. And then the spreadsheet calculates the percent change in growth over the years. And you'll see that, that it's been up and down. You know, the best year you had was 13, 14. That was 3.88% growth in the county. The worst year you had was 15, 16, where you were down 1.96% in growth. So what the spreadsheet does is it averages that out and the statute allows in a rev, in a revaluation year, the reva, the revenue neutral calculation allows you to take advantage of the average growth that would have occurred normally. So it looks back over the last eight years and according to the spreadsheet, the calculation is .9% on average each year is what the county has grown. So you look at and determine what the new tax rate is that would bring you the same amount of revenue you received last year. And then you're allowed by the, by the calculation to increase it by .9% or by the average growth over the last eight years, which for Beaufort County has been .9%. So, so if you take the .5719 and increase that by .9%, it's .5770. Now, again, we, we have tried to tend, we tend to stay on a half cent increment. Some folks stay on a whole penny increment. We tend to try to stay on a half penny increment. Now, that's up to the board to decide what you want to do, but that's where, that's where we have, and for this one, the half penny's the same as the penny. But, so we bumped that from, from .57, .7 to .58. So 58 cent is the revenue neutral calculation for this year, for the reevaluation. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And again, if you, if you want to see the ins and outs of how those calculations were, you can open that spreadsheet and click on those cells and it will show you the formulas on how they do that. But you can do this manually, but the LGC provides everybody and anybody who wants to click it and download it from their website, this spreadsheet. And everybody, that's what everybody uses. So it's very, it's easy to use. So I'll turn your attention, if you would, to page 21, which is the, just the summary of revenues for the general fund. And I'll draw your attention to, I'm not sure if it's in the front folder of your book or in the back folder of your book. But if you will look and want to make sure everybody has one, I think there was some confusion last year, but this is your, this is your revenue sheet. This is in the book. It is a spreadsheet that Anita puts together and it has every revenue stream that we, we touch. And it shows the, what we normally show, the 17, 18 appropriation, the revised budget, where it is on our estimate, and then what's recommended, what we think's going to happen. So if you're, if you want to delve into the individual specific line item revenues, this is where you find it. Now, I'm not going to do that with you because it would take us all night long to go through this sheet. We'll certainly look at any particular one you want to look at, but we generally, we roll them up and, and show them in general form. So stop me anytime you, you want to. But starting on page 21, you'll see how we roll those up. Now, the one thing I want to show you is, and we talked about it in the message, was there's an additional revenue source that we've added into the budget this year that's new. And if you look at the top where it says major revenue fund sources, one, two, three, four, five, six down, it says administrative charge from other funds. Now, you will find the detail of that on page 409 in your book. It's down at the back in the appendix, 409. What this does is this is an administrative charge from the enterprise funds to pay for services that the enterprise funds use from the general fund. So typically in a, in an enterprise fund, it lives, it lives on its own revenues. It is a standalone business fund and it pays for all its services and its revenues offset that. Well, in general, there are other, there are other general fund services that are provided to the water fund, to the solid waste fund, the county attorney's time, the finances, finance office's time, my time, our IT contract. Those are things that are funded by the general fund, but the enterprise funds use them. So in fairness, the general, the enterprise funds ought to pay for that service. They shouldn't get a free ride on it because otherwise you're subsidizing the enterprise funds with general tax dollars, which you shouldn't be doing. So if you want to see the actual units that we, that we broke that down on, if you'll look on page 409, a quick example of that, and I think I mentioned that in my message to you, was like IT. We have a, we have a total IT budget that we contract that looks after our IT services. So whatever that total number is, you look at each unit is one computer. So if the finance office has two computers, then they get charged two out of, two of them, of the total. They have a lot more than two computers. But you look at the number of units in each department, that's how they get charged back. So that's why we were, that's why we chose that unit. That's why we charge that back to the water fund and that's why we charge that back to the solid waste fund. So that is something new. It accounts for about $304,000 in the revenue stream. And again, that's to offset the subsidy, or it would be a subsidy if you weren't collecting those funds back. Does that make sense to everybody?
Brian, the largest one on here in the water department or either in solid waste or water is the finance, finance department, which is $123,000.
Based on number of bills, I believe is what it is.
Okay.
They generate a lot of bills and, and our folks had, the finance office has to process those bills and pay them. So that's the basis for which they determine that cost. We do the same kind of thing. DMG Maximus does essentially the same kind of thing that we're talking about each year for the county because you do the same thing with DSS. There are certain services that are provided by the county that are charged back to DSS. They use that, that calculation so that when you pull your, draw your money down from the state, you're able to recover those funds as well. So that, that's the one, that's a new change there. So looking at the bottom of page 21, talking about property taxes, we've, we've talked about that the new taxable valuation based on the 2018 revaluation for 18, 19 is $5.73 billion. So that is down about five and a half percent from where we were before. You'll see that using a 60 cent collection rate, which is what we've proposed, that's three cent for the revenue neutral, which your calculation on the previous page shows you that, and then two additional cents to ensure that we're able to cover all the continuing operations that you have right now. And again, we haven't added anything to this budget. We haven't added any services. These are the same services that you're providing this year, what it takes to provide them next year. Now, if you want to adjust that, change that, take stuff out, that's what we're here to talk about. But the way we present the budget in a fair manner is to say, here's what it costs to do exactly what you're doing next year. And then the board decides whether you want to change that from policy decisions, add something, take away something, however. And we set those up for you in service expansions or anything that you may want to do. So if you look at that, and we're required to use last year's audited number for collection, which was 97.92% for real property, and then we're able to use 100% for motor vehicle. And that's simply because nowadays with the new taxing tag, you can't get a tag without paying your taxes. So, so that's been a great benefit for, for all counties. So looking at that, it's a, it's a 60 cent recommended rate and that brings you $33.7 million in taxes, in property taxes. If you look at the two cent additional, you know, folks will ask, folks will say, you know, what is that increase? Well, the two cent on 58, and, and the reason I'm using two cent on 58 instead of five cent on 55 is that the three cent is a revenue neutral calculation. People will call it a tax increase, but it is not a tax increase. It is, it is by the revenue neutral calculation what gets you the same revenues you received last year, which is appropriate under the reevaluation statutes. So what I would say to you is the two cent on 58 is 3.4% increase. There's a 3.4% increase in taxes based on that two cent. And for that two cent, if you think about, in rough, in rough math, if you say a $100,000 home or a $100,000 value of piece of property, a two cent tax increase is $20 a year. So for every penny, it's $10 on $100,000 valuation. So for, so that gives you a way to scale it up or scale it down. Does that make sense? Okay. So you'll see the property tax calculation there. We also have prior year collections. We have penalties and interest, which brings our total to 34.357 million. On your next page, you'll see sales and other taxes. Again, this, the, the sales taxes are, are up and that's because the general assembly has broadened the base. You are now paying sales taxes on a lot of things that you weren't normally paying sales tax on. For us, that's helped. Sales tax revenues this, in this current fiscal year are up about 2%. And what we are projecting is that they might reach about additional 4%. I think we said 3.8 next year is what we built into it. Our belief is that we will start to plateau sometime next year on that, simply because you get to a point where things start to, start to plateau and, and once the base gets reset, you know, unless people are buying more stuff, which they may, the economy continues to grow, that sales tax number will go up. But our anticipation is that once you get everything taxed and it starts leveling, you'll see it start to level out a little bit. So that's where we are. Overall, and you have the breakdown, the different articles of, of sales taxes and what they're required to go for. Then you have the beer and wine and the excise for the registered deeds and the, and the rental receipts. We are up, we're projecting to be up about $389,000 this year in that category. Any questions about those numbers? If not, the intergovernmental, the intergovernmental revenues is the second piece of that. You'll see overall that is down about $1.8 million. Now, the big piece of that is the state, is the federal and state grants, which is mostly the funding that's running through DSS. There have been some changes in the system and Melanie would be glad to stand up and give you all the ins and outs of that. But, but I guess the big picture is they're doing a lot more through NC FAST and they're doing a lot more through NC TRACKS. So a lot of those funds that used to flow through the county are not flowing through the county anymore. So that decreases the overall budget. It decreases the revenue side coming in and decreases the expense side going out. So, so that's where you see this decrease, the majority of this decrease.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Are we getting any unfunded mandates from the state? Is some of that decrease?
We are, we're always subject to see some of those. What we know right now is we're anticipating some, some rule changes in detention centers that would require us to, to do some additional staffing, which we would consider an unfunded mandate. I mean, they changed the rules on us that says, that, that says you have to do rounds more often. So that would be by definition for us an unfunded mandate. That's all that we know of that's out there right now, but the general assembly just went back to session yesterday and, and who knows what may come out between now and the time they adjourn.
How about the classroom side?
The classroom side right now has been pushed back.
I know that.
So, you know, I think we're, and they have, they have said and they've put some funds in there to, to ramp it up to where they're covering it. And that's what they've said they're going to do. They're going to, they said they're going to continue to do that. And I guess all you can do is take them on their word until, you know, until they don't. So those are the intergovernmental revenues. Those are subject to move up and down simply because, you know, programs may get expanded by the feds or by the state over the years, you know, throughout the year, they may, something new may come out. They may find some additional funding for, you know, we see that a lot like with FEMA or with other federal programs where they may say, we've got this extra money, we're going to push it out. So you may see those fluctuate a little bit. On page 23 is the license fees and other general fund revenues. These are the, this is where we're charging back in an attempt to recover the costs that you have in those programs that are being directly provided to people. The example of that is EMS. Yes, there's, there's some subsidy that comes through general fund on that, but if you ride on, if you take a trip on ambulance, you get billed for that and that's by design. You use the service, you pay for the service. Now, unfortunately, in EMS, it's an expensive service and, and you would never, nobody's, nobody is, is making a profit off that. And the reason is we don't stop and we don't ask and say, well, have you got cash on you or, or can you pay? And we don't, you know, if you can't, we're not going to pick you up. We provide that service to anybody and everybody that needs it and we work on the billing and handle that as it comes. But you'll see through, these are the, the fees and services. They're up about $229,000 overall. What I would say to you is the bigger changes that you'll see in here, there's about a $75,000 increase from EMS rescue fees. That goes from about, what, projecting from 425 to 500. Health fees, we're projecting up about 295 to 361. School resource officer, you'll see where that was at 194 and we're saying 254 now. There is a, there's a grant program through the state that the school system has applied back for, that it's going to cover a piece of that. So that's where that's, we're getting back to being normal at. Had a conversation with Joanna Reese with the association yesterday about where they thought things were going to shake out with the state. And of course, you've got a service expansion to talk about school resource officers. Right now, there's a bill out there and essentially what they're saying is, and it was really, it was interesting because she said, we're not even pulling punches anymore. We're just telling people the governor's budget doesn't matter. Just don't even read the governor's budget because the general assembly doesn't care about the governor's budget. They're doing their own as, as they normally do. But she says there's been a bill that's coming out that has $1.8 million added just for school resource officers. It's under a grant program. So we'll see if that stays or if that gets bumped up. You know, the governor was saying he would put $10 million out there for it. The general assembly has said 1.8. So we'll see how that goes.
He's saying 1.8 million?
1.8 million across the state to add to.
For the whole state?
To add, to add for SROs, yes. Right now, that's, that's what it looks like right now. That's the House side. My understanding is the Senate hasn't come out with theirs yet. So, so we'll see. Again, that's one of those things that you've got, the, the good news is both the, both the executive mansion and the general assembly are both talking about it. So something's going to happen. We just don't know to the extent what's going to happen yet.
Is that the bill that also has in it mental health?
There is a separate bill out there, I think.
So it's not as part of the SRO?
That talks about nurses and counselors.
But 1.8 million for every school in the state?
No, the entire state.
That's what I'm saying. But I meant to cover every school.
That's currently what, that's currently the bill that's out there.
1.8.
But I don't know where that, we don't know where that's finally, where that's finally.
Is the, if the state does fund that, would that be a one-time funding? And then we have to pick the cost up of it after that?
No, the way it has been in the past is it's a grant program where you apply for it and then you reapply the next year. So we've been successful in getting those grants over the years to fund resource officers.
Do you have three of them funded through?
$60,000.
$60,000 funded through that, so.
But it shows income for this year at $194,865 under revenue. So where did the other 130,000 or 20,000 come from?
It's from the school system. The school system pays us back that. We have a contract with the school system.
We give them money and they give it back?
It's a contract.
Makes a lot of sense. Well, it's a contract from the standpoint of formality in, in a contract for what we're doing. So you're just rolling money over in order to make sure that we do have a contract to define the duties. That's the only purpose of the contract. It's not the money. But we got 60,000 grant is all that we got.
I actually miss budgeting for that in the current year. If you look at fiscal year 16, 17, actual, you can see it was the 254, 866.
Yeah.
And the difference between the 254, 866 and 194, 866 is the $60,000. So I didn't realize we were going to get that grant again this year. So we are going to get it. I just missed budgeting for it. So it's just kind of like a win for us.
All right. And while we're on it, I've got a couple more questions. If, if you do the billing in EMS countywide like you're doing, you're, you should get more than $500,000 in revenue this year from EMS.
Well, remember, that's just for our billing. We're not taking anybody else's money. We're consolidating that. And I want folks to really clearly understand that. We want to say that as many times as we can because there's, there's always this, there's always this conspiracy theory out there that the county wants to take other people's money. We don't, we're not going to take anybody else's money. Their money is going to go back to those squads. But right now, I think that's the best estimate that we have. Our hope is that we beat that because of course, we're consolidating that so that we're able to drive down the percent that the billing company gets. You know, they get a certain percent for doing work. And as we get larger and larger numbers, we're able to drive that percentage down as well as, as.
Gain some efficiencies in it.
All right. I got you. Got one more question. Deputy travel reimbursements, $80,200. Who pays us that money?
Oh, that is my, that, that is DSS or child, no, that's child support. That's child support. The Young Williams pays, has a contract with sheriff's office.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that.
For a deputy. And that's where the, that's where those funds.
So that's really, that's not deputy travel reimbursement. That's Young Williams or contracted deputy service would be a better way to word that.
And we can certainly change the way that.
Okay.
We've got a lot of stuff in, in our system that, that was just.
I understand.
We'll make it sound a little better. It does sound kind of bad, doesn't it?
Well, all right. I understand. Brian, just so that everybody understands the numbers.
Yes, sir.
If you go back to the 1.8 million that's being talked about in Raleigh.
Yes, sir.
That's $18,000 per county. $18,000. That didn't even fund one.
It didn't fund a car.
It's a joke.
Hopefully, hopefully, of course, that's just one side of the, that's just one side of it. So hopefully maybe they'll, they'll go ahead and do it. So overall, again, that's up, $229,000 we'll estimate. On page 24, you'll see we talk about investment in earnings and transfers. That's simply an increase, not simply an increase, it's an increase of $120,000 worth of debt. And that is based on increases in the Federal Reserve and then also the decreased cost in banking services. We, we saved a significant amount of money when we, when we put out an RFP for banking services and made that transition, so. And plus the Fed jacking the interest rate is helping us because we have, we have our investments out there laddered in so that they, so they're earning good interest. On page 25 is the general fund appropriated fund balance piece. As you'll see, this year, we are recommending $251,457 in fund balance. That's .44%, less than a half percent of the entire general fund expenditures. That's down $793,000 or and so dollars from last year. It is our intent, if that number stays around that 251, that we believe we'll return that amount of mon, that amount of money back to the general fund at the end of the year due to lapse salaries and other things that occur over the year. We, we feel comfortable that that money will end up back in the general fund and not be used. You'll see that at the, in, in the middle of the page with the chart, we show that the estimated use of fund balance and where it should, where it ends up the end of this year on June 30th of 2018 is about $15.9 million. And that's based on the current year expenditure, so it would be about 25.7% of your percent of expenditure. Now, next year, the way we do that calculation is we assume that the budget, every bit of the budget is spent and you use all the fund balance you said you were going to use. And if all that happens, then your fund balance on June 30th, 2019 is projected to be 15.6 million. So that's down a little bit. However, when you look at percentage of expenditures, because your budget, your overall budget is smaller and it's the, it's one of the numbers you're dividing by, it, the percentage goes up. So we're, it's showing 27.63%. Any questions about fund balance? Okay. Page 26 is the overall summary of your general fund expenditures. And we're going to go through those individually as we hit the departments, as, as we jump into general government. But this is the overall big picture page. And you'll see that it's, it's laid out the same way it's been laid out for the last two years. You'll see 16, 17 actual numbers. You'll see 17, 18 estimate numbers. You'll see the original 17, 18. 17, 18, you'll see anything that was revised this year, so if there was, if there were adjustments to that, those budgets, either plus or minus, you'll see there, and you'll see what the revised number is, what we think it's gonna be, after all that. Then the recommended number that comes in the budget, that we're presenting to you, we show a percentage difference from recommended to recommended, or from the original, so we wanna show you apples to apples. And for us, that's that first percentage column. So that's what the budget was, the original budget, 17, 18, this year's starting budget compared to what we're recommending for the new year. The percentage difference, whether up or down, in those individual departments. The last percent column is what we're recommending this year compared to what it is this year already amended. So if you added some money to a budget, it's obviously gonna show a lot larger percentage. So, again, we, our piece is, what we like to look at is apples to apples, and that's the 17, 18 originals, and that shows that the budget's overall down about 2% or $1.14 million. So again, we'll go into that in detail, but those are the big ones. The summary on page 27, these are the other governmental funds, these are restricted funds, some of them are restricted funds, well, they're all restricted funds. The 911 service fund, that's money that comes in from the state, from the 911 fees. The seized drug fund is money that comes in based on drug forfeiture and seizure. The EMS and rescue tax fund, that shows where we're bringing those funds in, you'll see that's down a little bit, and that's normal, because the valuation is downward. We've had that conversation, Carney's had that conversation with, with, with the departments, and our recommendation then was, let's kinda hold tight this year, and let's just see how it shakes out. So we'll see from that side, the EMS tax is the same thing, it's down a little bit based on valuations going down and the tax rate's not changing, because remember, like on the EMS side, those taxes are capped at five cent, and you have all but-
One district.
All but one district, Longacre, that's not already capped at five cents, so. The tax revaluation fund, we're starting all over again, we've got eight years to build that fund up, you're required by statute, just take one-eighth of what you think it's gonna cost you in eight years, and set it aside each year, so that when you get to year number eight, the money's sitting there, you're required to do that by statute. The economic development fund is, we call it the economic development fund, but it is, of that $80,000, $45,000 is for the airport grant. You remember when the county got out of the airport business, and passed it over to the city, there was an agreement there that they would fund what's called an airport grant for the baseline of what was out there, because it got de-annexed, so it was an economic incentive to put airplanes out there, and so the deal was that we would rebate, well, not rebate, we would give them back a certain amount for what they, they lost based on the basis out there.
Is that in addition to dividing taxes with them?
No, it's not taxed out there.
No, 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 the planes that are there.
No, well, what happened was, there was a, when you were both working together, you said, "Okay, here's the base, this is the value that's out there right now, anything above that value, the city gets the credit for it, and we would give them the funds, anything above that." So if there's growth out there, and they're able to attract a bunch of airplanes, they win, they get extra money, because they're working to do it, we're not in it. So that's where those additional funds come from. Did I say that right?
Yes.
I thought the deal was that they, they would, we would guarantee them that they would not lose money in taxes, which meant you valued the properties, the planes and stuff that are out there, and you just give them whatever their tax rate is.
They get any, they get the tax rate, they get the taxes above what the baseline was. There was a baseline that was settled on.
In other words, credit, the taxes are credited up to the baseline, then, then if they go above $45,000, we guaranteed a floor of $45,000.
Well, no, it's not necessarily $45.
It's like $8,100.
Yeah. It's, we put that out there as the amount that we may be giving them throughout the year, based on the increase out there.
Just for this year, it's not a grant in the sense of a grant, it's an earned revenue in their case.
Right, there's a contract between the, there's an inter-
Yeah, I remember when we did the contract, oh yeah.
And, and the deal is, if they, if they don't do anything, and, and it falls below that, they get nothing.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's to their advantage to work hard and get a bunch of-
To get more planes out there.
Because they benefit from it.
Right.
And the county has its base amount that it gets, no matter what, off of it, and that doesn't change, so.
Yeah, there's a contract.
Yes, there is. The capital, oh, I'm sorry, and then the other piece out there, the other part of that, $45, and then the $35,000 is for the committee 100 agreement that the board entered into, for the industry ready building out there, that's what that other piece is. You had a, you committed to-
Now, they have to make a demand for that money, that's just there, if they have to show that they've spent more than.
No, you, the board committed up to $35,000 a year, no more than $35,000 a year, for however many years it takes to reach 127 or something.
Well, but, but-
And they do, they sent us, they sent us a note and says, "Here's, here's what we're requesting."
Their overage, they have to, it has to be money that they've actually spent, we're not giving them a gift.
No, 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 it's a reimbursement, you're right, it's a reimbursement.
And they've showed you that they've spent the money?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep. And once it hits 35-
They don't get any more?
For the fiscal year, they don't get any more, and then you start again the next-
Caps, 139 or something.
Yeah, somebody, and then once we get to that, that's the maximum ever, you know, so their incentive is to sell that sucker fast.
Right.
So, capital reserve fund is $55,000, that's where you're setting money aside for the next five years to replace voting machines, so you're, you're building up a reserve fund there for-
To replace what?
Voting machines.
Oh, gotcha.
And then the aging grant is funds that come in through the state for home community, home community care block grant for aging.
Was there none in 2018? Under the original budget?
Actually, it was, it was originally budgeted in the general fund.
Okay.
Should've been in a special revenue.
I got you.
Okay, so in general, that's where we are, and our goal now is to move through the individual departments, and the way you have those in your budget, starting on page 31, under general government, is the board of commissioners, the way we have it set up, just like we've done for the last two years, you've got a description. Our goal is to try to make a budget that's informative, that is not only a financial document from which you can debate policy, but also informative document, where people in the public can pick it up and read it and understand where the funds are going, that are being associated with each of the, each of the departments. So you'll see, you get a title, you get a description of what the department is, what they do, like on y'all's, it shows the county commissioners, and then we break it out by personnel, benefits, operating, and capital. We show the 16, 17, 17, 18, and then the 18, 19 recommended. So you can see if it's up, down, or sideways, in those general categories of personnel, benefits, operating, and capital. So, for, for the board of commissioners, you are slightly up, and you'll see on the next page, that's not the only thing you got, you'll see individual line items for the board of commissioners on page 32. So on every sheet that you have for every department, you'll have this same format, you'll have the roll-up on the front, and then on the back, you'll have the detail. So you can see each line item, and it will show you what the actuals were in 15, 16, 17, and then what was 18, and then what's requested in 19, and you can look, cross them up, down, left and right, see them all. So in general, the county commissioner's budget is up, what, $4,000 from last year, and that is due to insurance changes and workers' comp, health insurance changes and workers' comp, we had some increases on, on those, and, and those get, get passed along into each of the departments. So you'll see, you'll see, especially some of our smaller departments, where you have two people, three people, where you just can't, you get to a point where, when insurance goes up and help, like health insurance goes up, and workers' comp, and property liability goes up, you get to the point where you can't take anything else out of that budget, you can't, you can't take away, you can't give them money to pay the utility bill, you gotta do that, so you can't cut anymore, so you'll see those, some of those have to go up, simply because of those factors that we have no control over. So, if there are any questions about the governing board, be glad to answer those, but you, you have those in front of you, and we'd be glad to.
Any questions?
Dues and prescriptions, tell me about that.
Dues and subscriptions are anything that the county is paying for, that is the county, school or government-
Give me an example.
School of government dues-
State Association.
NACO dues-
State Association.
NCACC dues, the COG dues, council governments dues, those kinda things. Things like your, your membership to the Washington Bedford Chamber of Commerce, your membership to the Bellhaven Chamber of Commerce, because it is a county, it's a county membership, we charge it to the board of commissioners. It falls under y'all's, and that's traditionally where it's been, well, it's not traditionally where it's been, it's where we, it's where we put it in the last three years, because that's where it really ought to be, because it is a county level thing, it's not an individual, it's the county, so.
I noticed there's no retirement under the governing board.
Yes, sir.
You're exactly right.
Of course, it only affects a few of them. Oh, good.
Any, any questions there? Page 33 is county administration. That is my office, and includes the risk manager, the administrative assistant up front, clerk to the board, no changes in position. Again, that's another thing you'll see in these, it's consistent across all the departments, you'll see the number of full-time positions that are authorized, you'll see 14, 15, 16, 17, and what we're recommending in 18, so you can see if there's been any changes. Again, we're trying to make a document that is as informative as it can be, so people understand what it's all about. So overall, you'll see in our department, we're down less than $1,000 overall, but we're less than where we were last year. Be glad to answer any questions specifically about the line items, if you have them.
Here are none.
Finance is the next one, you'll see, there are some changes that occurred last year. I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Brian, like on drug testing, is that going on a different department?
Under drug testing, it's, it is under human resources.
Okay. And the employee luncheon?
The employee luncheon is under non-departmental.
Okay.
Yep. Again, these are some of the things that, that in the system, it was put in certain places, and as Anita and I got looking at it, we said, "This really belongs in a different place, we wanna try to get the expenditures in the right places, so that they're easy to track over time." So it's gonna take us a couple of years for things to get, where we wanna see them, but because the, like the employee luncheon, it just, it applied to the entire county, so we put it under non-departmental, because that's where non-departmental things that apply to the entire county go. We could've stuck it under y'all's budget, but-
Because I see it was once-
Yeah, right.
Way back.
Right, right. So on page 35 is finance, you'll notice there were some changes there last year, we removed the positions from the water department, where they were consolidated up underneath. The finance department's recommended budget is down from last year, and Anita will answer any questions you might have on her line items.
One of those double asterisks is beside of the 11, fiscal year 18, 19 recommended, 11, two asterisks, what does that mean?
Look at the box right above it, see where those double asterisks are?
Oh, yeah, I was looking at the bottom of the page.
Right, sorry.
Gotcha.
That's where we got moved.
These were not new positions, these were, these were positions that were-
They were removed, never.
Second to another.
Human resources. Human resources on page 37, you see there are three positions there, actually, the nurse is gonna fill that final position, and she is down a couple hundred dollars from where she was last year, so if there are any questions, she's here, there she is. Of course, she, she has one of those small departments, I mean, there aren't a couple of people in that department, so as you start, as health insurance goes up, and other things start to go up, it's difficult to start, you can only cut so many paperclips out to where you, but, but again, this year, that budget's gone down, has, have the majority of our departments across all the county services, so we're trying to continue to squeeze as best we can.
This, this is a question that you can answer with an email.
Okay.
It appears that there's different amounts of money that the county's putting in, like into the sheriff's office retirement plan, county employee, and then, and then we've seen a different number on the schools, can we, can we get something from you guys in an email?
Well, yeah, be glad to, and just let me address that. By statute, law enforcement officers receive an additional retirement piece, that's, that's, that's by statute. So there is a, you'll see an additional piece on that, it's called the LEO retirement.
That's how that guy in Florida gets $108,000 a year in retirement, at the school?
Well, what, what I'm interested in is, is, is the difference between what county employees and the sheriff's office and the school system. The school system has a request for an increase in that number, which appears to be higher than what we're doing for county employees.
Right now, and I know you're talking about a salary, you're talking about a salary adjustment for the school system, they're showing-
No, 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 this, they're asking for that, but they're also asking for an increase in the amount of money that's going into the retirement plan, the county's contribution.
Well, and that may be true, we'd have to look at that, because ours is-
We're under elders, we're under the local retirement, they're under the state retirement.
And, and ours is going up too, the elders is going up, is stepping up each year for the next four or five years, the-
A quarter of a percent.
Yeah, secretary is the treasurer.
So that's a mandatory mandate on the county there?
Yes, yes, and that's because of, of making sure that the fund is stable. It's probably one of the most stable funds in, in the United States, it's funded very, very well, but, but the treasurer has, has made some changes to make sure that it is there in another 50 years.
But just don't, just don't mess up my good government check, y'all do what you-
He's cleaned up a lot of stuff in the fund, too, there's been a lot of-
Do what you have to do.
A lot of abuses, and he's cleaned those out.
Yeah, and, and the thing about that is, and to Commissioner Booth's point, for anybody who's thinking about that, any changes that they make to the system, whether it be the health piece, or the retirement piece, or I know the retirement piece, typically the health piece, but we were in a meeting with him the other day, and of course, they're looking at the next 50 years, because they can't make a change and it affect existing employees, because, you know, he made that comment pretty clear, he said, "I tried to change something, I got sued, and the courts made me put it back," so-
Yeah, he did.
When they're looking at things, they're looking at the retirement of people who are coming into the system today.
That's right.
New hires, they can't, you know, so that's why they've got a 30-year horizon on what they're looking at.
Hoping I'll be dead.
Figuring you stick around for another 30 years, come on.
You're vested, I mean, if you're vested, the non-vested is the ones that can give a new program to.
They might ask, he had to come back and work part-time for nothing.
Well, that's right, they may ask you to pay back for some of that stuff he didn't do when he was there.
You right again.
Right again.
That's right.
We're getting a little off course here, Brian, get back.
Sure, I got you, and, and with the board's permission, any of our department heads who we've gone past, are y'all okay with them excusing themselves?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Yes.
Just want, so that's out there, you're happy to stick around if you want to, but you don't have to.
Unless y'all won't stick around.
So under the-
Don't be ashamed.
Yeah. Under the tax assessor's office, a couple, one quick thing you'll see on that, is we went from 10 employees to 13 employees, that's not new employees, that's the three planning and land records people that moved back underneath the tax assessor, and for that, you'll see the budget went up because of that. Overall, that budget is about flat, if you were to take, if you were to take out for that. But Mr. Parker's here, and if you have any questions for Mr. Parker, the detailed budget for that is on page 40, as shown here.
I was at a training session the other day, and they, they asked how many people were there, knew the name of the GSI person in the county, and I didn't know that, who is that, Bobby? Tony.
Garrus.
Land record.
Back in the decision, Anthony Garrus.
It's not Tony.
Anthony.
Anthony, AKA Tony.
Any questions? If not, Bobby, you're- Bobby, you're.
Well, I got.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
The three employees that you took out of planning
Did we move back?
And moved to tax collectors' or tax assessor's office. Okay. Their salaries automatically go to the assessor's office, right?
We moved those under that.
Moved the salaries right along with the people, that's why that figure was up.
That's why it figures up, and that's why in the plan, you'll see that figure go down.
Gotcha.
We weren't creating anything new or adding anything, we were just moving. So under the collector's side, on page forty-one, you'll see the one change there, where we went from seven employees to six employees. And this was a piece that the board approved a couple of months ago, when we had one of our collectors leave, actually, she went to work for Pitt County. Instead of filling that position, we eliminated that position, and we are in the process of establishing a lockbox service, where instead of our folks manually taking the mail, ripping it open, punching it in, it will be done by an automated machine at our banking services folks, and at a great rate that will save us.
Thirty-four thousand dollars a year.
Thirty-four thousand dollars a year.
Getting rid of. Do they pay us that money, once a month?
No, no, it comes in daily.
Comes in daily, I got it, got it.
And we'll get an electronic transfer. The other thing that they do is they will scan, you know, the big thing for us on the tax side is the envelope. Folks don't realize that, there's a lot of information we get off the envelope, especially the postmark date, because the statute reads that when people are paying, you look at the postmark date, and if your postmark date is ahead of the due date, then you're okay. If it's after the due date, you get the penalty, no matter, you know. So what it does is it scans the envelope, and it scans the check, and it automatically deposits some money, and then it sends it to us on a daily basis. So it is a tremendous help, and they can, I mean, it's high-speed processing, where it might take our staff, working really hard, you know, eight hours to. We sometimes get backed up over there, because you get a ton of mail every day when stuff's coming in, and it may take them a couple of days to get called up. The really nice thing about the lockbox system is, they will clear that out every day. That machine doesn't slow down, so.
And on that, you said it scans the letter that comes in, and then it gives us a report on who was late and who wasn't late?
Well, it gives us the report, yes, and we would know if there was things like that.
They're not going to sit in Pennsylvania and make a legislative decision for North Carolina. They're going to give us the information, we're going to make the legislative decision.
So I'm not going to get a call from a taxpayer that says, "I'm trying to reconcile my bank statement, and the check is not cleared yet." It's going to be deposited pretty quick, right?
That's right.
You guys laughed, but I got one last year. I got one.
Well, now, I will also tell you this, and you will get this phone call, I guarantee you will get this phone call. You will get a phone call from somebody saying, "Why am I sending my tax out of state? Why is that going to an out-of-state address?" And it's because that's where the lockbox service is handled, and it's saving us money, so.
And you said that saves us thirty-four thousand a year?
People don't complain when the check's coming from there, out of state to them. Little difference, I guess.
We believe it'll be a tremendous benefit.
That phone calls, like I said, I've had that. And they say, "Why can't you get somebody down here?" Well, it's not a somebody, it's a machine.
And it's a, go on YouTube or somewhere like that and punch in check scanning machine. It's amazing what that thing does. I mean, they just dump it in there, and it opens, it scans, it deposits, whole nine yards.
No, this guy was complaining because it was at the end of the year, and they didn't, you know, everything got stacked up, and it took about ten days before it went through the bank. And he said the county could be making millions of dollars if they just get them deposited.
Well, and that's what we do, that's what we're going to be doing with the tax piece. We're already doing that with the water department bills. They're already using the lockbox service. And our EMS essentially is doing the same thing. Those checks that come in, if anybody pays by check to our EMS vendor, our EMS collector, those checks are scanned on a data basis and deposited as well, so. The other nice piece about that is that that information, correct me if I'm wrong, that information is going to come in, and it's going to automatically feed into our system.
We're working on the interface.
So there'll be an interface that comes from the lockbox service. Our folks won't be manually doing things like we had to do in the past.
I think you did some testing today.
Move to the court facilities.
You good? Anybody have anything with tax collector? Mia wants to stay a little bit longer, I think. Just kidding. So court facilities, this is the cost center where we do things relating to the court, the jury commission. We have courthouse operations. Last year, we established a line item for the clerk of court. There's twelve thousand five hundred dollars in there where he can do things. I think they bought some new chairs recently in the courtrooms, things like that, where they can put things up. Also, there's a slight increase in the security contract this year. Also, there's a decrease, because we're only paying half of the year of rent for the public defender's office, because starting January one, we're going to have them over in the Horn Building, and not be paying rent anymore. This is also where the utilities for the courthouse come out of. And where it says contract services, that's the security service, if you're looking at that line item. So that's on page forty-four. Any questions on that one?
On the utilities, we're not going to see a downturn in that with our new lighting, new lights going in?
We hope so, but we need to run it a year to see.
But that's all utilities, that's not just.
That's all the utilities, that's right. That's right, but, you know, they're supposed to be, because they're LEDs, there's supposed to be some savings in there. But I just don't, we just don't know how to estimate that yet, we'll see what it trends out at.
On contract services, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what does that entail?
That's the security service.
Secret, like that?
Yes, sir.
Any other? Okay, Brian?
So Board of Elections, Kelly was not able to be here tonight, she had a family emergency, I think. Was not able to be here, but this is their budget. It is down, and y'all remember how that goes. In an off-election year where they're not having a municipal election, and you're not having a municipal election in this upcoming fiscal year, eighteen, nineteen, because the municipal election will be in the next fiscal year, nineteen, twenty, past July one. So in this fiscal year, it's not. I saw it click over.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's why it's down. And then the next year, when you have one, it goes back up, so they're kind of likeliest. But it's about where we anticipate it to be. There is not a second primary this year, based on the changes that the state did on the forty percent piece, so that helps you. But those are your specific line items, and we can answer any questions you have. Be glad to do that, if you have any.
Registered deeds.
So the registered deeds budget, and I talked a little bit about this in the message as well, is up slightly. Almost fifty. But the majority of those funds, as you look on the other side, are related to automation funds. Every time you file a deed with the registered deeds, there's a, it gets split up in a whole bunch of ways. You know, there's some of it that goes to different funds. For marriage license, there's a piece that goes to support domestic violence.
Domestic violence, you pay in advance for beating your wife when you get married. You know that.
But then things like out of deeds, there's a piece that comes out of the deed. There's a piece of money that comes out of the deed that goes to automation funds that supports the registered deeds. So those funds get split up in multiple ways. And part of that is the automation fund. That goes back to the specific registered deeds in which those funds were received, and it is to be used for automation, for them to upgrade their computers, their servers, their scanning ability, those kind of things. So it's pretty smart on the state's part, it gives them a dedicated revenue stream coming back for maintenance to keep up for the registered deeds. So that's what the majority of this is. I think she's replacing some computers and some servers that are at the end of life, and.
Cabinets too, I think.
Sir?
When is some cabinets?
I think so, I think she's got some cabinets that are being replaced. So that's the majority of that one. And those are not, again, those are not general tax revenues that support, it's the automation fund revenues.
Yeah, those two line items is total of thirty-seven thousand, increase, increase. Last call, any question? Okay, maintenance buildings and grants.
Okay, on the maintenance side, this budget is up slightly, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And for that, we've included in this basic maintenance work. So that is just the basics of what are going on. There aren't any big projects listed in here like we had last year, these are just basic stuff. There is in this budget repairs to the Horn Building, because remember when y'all bought the Horn Building and took a credit on some of the repairs that needed to be done? So now, we've got to make those repairs before we put folks in there. So that, I guess you haven't been there right now, but there's some additional repairs that need to be made to the building before we put the public defenders in there. So those are in there, also some of the furnishings for the First Bank renovation are in there. So that's the increase there. The CIP that the board did last year, the program that was put together, where the guys from, actually, from Facility Dude came in, and they sent an engineer and a couple of building guys, and they walked every building we had and spent a few days, I think, here, looking at everything. And they put together the CIP for us, it's a twenty-year CIP. They included in that things like putting sprinkler systems in every building we owned, which we took those out, because you don't have to have that. If it was code at the time it was put in, if it wasn't, it doesn't make sense for us to spend that much money to go back and retrofit. But all the other stuff we left in, and what they showed over a twenty-year period was, we had about twenty-eight million dollars that needed to be spent on our buildings. That includes roofs, you know, replacing fixtures, lights, those kind of things, they looked at everything. So it ended up being about a million and a half, two million a year, to do that. We have shown in the service expansion, it is not included in this budget, but it is included as a service expansion, an opportunity if the board said, "Look, we've done this work on the CIP, and we paid to have this done, we now know what exposure we have out there." We've shown a one-penny increase, and taking that one penny and putting it as a dedicated revenue stream to a reserve fund that would just be for capital facility improvement. So we would take, if the board approved that, we would take the funds that come off that penny, put it in that restricted account, and then we would take the CIP, and each year of that CIP, we would fix those things that we need to fix, and we'd pull that money out of the CIP reserve fund. So that's an opportunity for the board to do that, if they so want to. That's why you asked.
So Brian, that would be another penny over the five?
And that would not fully fund it.
No, I understand that, it's only a half million dollars.
Yes, sir. It would be.
Never catch up.
So on page fifty is the individual line items on that.
The building repairs is up a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, is there something big in there? Because heat and air is a separate item, I see. Hundred and fifty thousand for heat and air, but.
Not really, I mean, what was the, a lot of this, a lot of the, hang on, let me find it.
It's all the, well, about two-thirds of the way down. It was a hundred and eighty-four thousand last year, and budget this year is three hundred and forty-two. It's a difference of a hundred and fifty-eight.
I don't remember, we do have a separate schedule that shows current year per building and next year proposed, and we can send you that by email.
That would be great.
I'd like to get those schedules.
The CIP?
No, the schedules that you're going to spend the dollars on. You know, like the projects that you're going to do in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, you like that?
Right, the big CIP schedule, the twenty-year CIP, yeah, we'll be late to send it to you.
It's actually in your book.
Yeah, it is, actually, sorry.
It's back in the expansion section on page one eighty-seven.
One eighty-seven, there you go. Yes, sir.
Yes.
When is the lease expired with Carolyn Building, when a public defender's in?
The end of this year. So our plan is that they'll finish up with the First Bank Building. When they do that, finance staff will move over. We'll retrofit this building before the end of the year, and then public defender staff will move. We've already, they've already walked the building, the public defenders folks have. We've had a conversation with state ITS about outfit, you know, to get them where they need to be, and.
Are they going to use the whole building?
Yes, sir. Everything I understood was very positive, they were, they seemed to be pleased with.
They ain't got much choice.
I think they've got ten or twelve. On page fifty-one is your debt service summary. This is the piece where we show you what debt the county has, what kind of debt it is, what the general category is, how much the principal and interest is for the upcoming year, what the specifics are, there's some things that were required to tell you, and that is that your legal debt margin as of June thirtieth of seventeen was four hundred and fifty-two million dollars. So you could borrow up to four hundred and fifty-two million dollars if you wanted to, you're currently nowhere near that. If you flip over to page fifty-two, and that's GO debt, that's taxable.
Go back to fifty-one for a minute, BCC allied health building. It just bothers me, when we have some surplus money and fund balance, and we're paying for the health building out at the community college, seventy-four thousand in principal and a hundred and one thousand in interest every year on this thing. We need to take a look at that and see how advantageous it would be, maybe, to throw a half a million in that and pay that down, if the contract will let us do it. Because it's like a mortgage, you know, you pay the first twenty years, and you don't pay anything. In the last ten, you pay it off, and this thing's eating up a lot of money.
We do have a pretty good rate on that, if you look on page fifty-three, it's the, one, two, three, four, it's the fifth one listed there. It's three and a half percent.
Yeah, I know, but it must be a hundred-year loan or something, so.
I think it's thirty years.
Yeah, so, you know, I just want to take a look at it and see what we can do about saving some money, because if you can put out a half a million and whack ten years off that, then you could do that now.
Well, when we were looking at the possibility, when the committee in college, or committee that I set on, we were looking at the possibility of refinancing that and adding money for the safety, public safety complex. We were told that we could not refinance that. We could add additional money to it, but we couldn't touch it. So I think there's probably a prepayment clause in there that will keep us from doing.
Blocked on prepayment.
And I think it was a forty-year loan, if I remember, I think it was forty.
It's eating up a lot of interest, you're paying a hundred and one thousand in interest and seventy-four thousand against the principal. If you've got money, you know where to invest it.
Yeah, USDA is usually forty-year stuff, and it's really good rates, but we'll look at it and see if there's a prepayment penalty on it. Sometimes there is up to a certain point, and then they. Typically, when we do work like that, we try not to have a prepayment penalty, any of the.
Well, there was something else involved in that deal out of the Atlanta office. They had something to do with the region, and I can't remember what it was, but I think you're going to find that you're stuck with, basically.
Well, look, so on page fifty-two, you'll see those outstanding general obligation debt bonds, outstanding general obligation debt, and what the balance is as of June thirtieth at the end of this fiscal year, and then what we project the balances to be at, or what the balances will be, not what we project them to be, what they will be at the end of those remaining four years. And you'll see, it steps down pretty good, we're at twenty-three point seven million right now, and then four. We're at twenty-three point seven million right now, and then four years in two thousand and twenty-two, we'll be at fourteen point seven.
Yeah, we're paying on principal.
So things are coming down. And then on the next page, on fifty-three, you'll see the actual, when it was issued, when the final pay date is, what the description is, how much you're paying, what the interest rate is and what type. Is it an installment bond or is it a G O bond? You only got three of those G O bonds up there, the rest are installment. The only one that you cannot pay off, because we looked at it, is the installment purchase on one seventeen West Third Street, the Francisco Building. There is a contract that you have that does not allow us to pay that one off early.
That's not...
And who looked at that?
Nobody.
Looked at it?
We looked...
We contracted with the seller. That's a personal contract. That's not a contract with a bank.
Yeah, we actually already looked at that.
Seller financing.
Yes. So we actually looked at all of them we got. In the first year, we looked at them to see what could we, Davenport came in and helped us and look, you know, what was appropriate, what we tried to refinance and whatever, and we looked at, but the contract doesn't allow us to do that. Anything else on debt? Okay, so page fifty-five is the non-departmental. There's some questions there. These are the things that are essentially across the entire county. Unemployment insurance, the F L S A law impact that's still hanging out there, the employee assistance program that the board put in a couple of years ago, that's paid out of that. Your insurance and your bonds come out of all that, so we're paying the association county commissioners on your insurance coming out of that. Our I T support, we do that for postage, because it's just cumbersome and way too much work for us to track postage for each. So it just comes out of that in general. The employee luncheon is there, so that's about four hundred and twenty-four, which is down about twenty-five from where it was last year. And you can see those on the next page, the individual prior years.
On the I T support?
Yes, sir.
Did we pay any money to D S S?
We do not pay any money to D S S.
For their support?
Yes, sir. They're nice enough to help us with those. I T needs when we need them.
Well, you opened up the can of worms tonight.
Yeah, I can tell what she's thinking. I can see the gears going.
Moving along.
We have to might charge an extra I T support service to the commissioner's line item for that.
We help her too. I hope you feel like we help you too.
Yes, we do.
So on page fifty-seven, transfer to other funds. Of course, we talked about that, the revaluation fund, that's where we're starting to rebuild that fund. The economic development fund is the one we talked about with committee one hundred and the airport funding. And then the capital reserve is the voting machine. That's year two of five. So that's what those are, and we generally talk about those. And on page fifty-eight, this contingency, we put in twenty-five thousand dollars as contingency. You'll see where we were on contingency this year. We spent nineteen thousand of it on the emergency management generator. That was the north side generator. After Carney and his crowd got hold of it, it went from two hundred thousand dollars to less than twenty. So they did a great job in getting that thing worked out.
So that's up and running in case we have a hurricane to come through.
All right, page fifty-nine, if you are good to go on to human services. This is the Department of Social Services, and Melanie is here. And this is one of those where they have different breakdowns amongst all their, you know, they have different divisions. They can certainly, they can answer any of those questions that you might have regarding those. There've been some changes, I think, obviously we talked about. But I'm going to let her talk about those, because it's pretty, unless you're in the D S S department and understand the D S S stuff, it takes money inside the department.
Hal, I have one question. How much of your budget is non-mandated by the state or the feds that is paid for by the county?
Come to the mic.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Makes Randy's job a little bit easier if you're up there.
I got it. Non-mandated services?
Not mandated by the state or the feds, but is paid for entirely by the county. Isn't the home health service?
In-home services?
Yeah.
So we do get some funds to administer that program by the Home and Community Care Block grant?
About how much of what you spend comes from?
Four hundred, I think this year it's four hundred and twenty-eight. Well, just for that program is about two hundred and nineteen thousand.
And what's the total on the program about?
On H C C B G or just the in-home?
The in-home.
I don't have that breakdown for the H C C B G here with me, but I can get you that.
About, well, just give me an estimate.
Maybe two hundred and fifty thousand?
It's a two hundred and fifty thousand expense, and we get about two hundred thousand from the state?
I would say so, just right off the top of my head.
We went through it. I think it was ten thousand, if I remember.
It's a, H C C B G has a county mandated ten percent. So whatever they give us, the county has to put in a ten percent share.
It was somewhere around ten thousand. We've already seen that number.
Put this in language I can understand. This is the home health care part that you're contracting out.
We have some in-house that are in-house, and we have some that are contracted. As people are retiring, we're moving that, those funds to a...
That's right, but yeah. But really, most of that is paid for by the state then, based on what you're telling me?
Yes. Through that grant.
Right. Is there, are there any other programs that are funded one hundred percent by the county?
Not off the top of my head.
Everything that you have is mandated by a state or a fed, and most of it's paid for by the state and the fed?
Yes. Now, Northwoods program, that's not mandated.
That's the computer program?
Yes.
That makes you efficient?
That's right.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about it goes out as so-called welfare to the public, to help people.
Yes, all of our programs that are offered, that we offer are either state or federally mandated programs.
Under, I guess it's okay to skip around?
Just close the page.
On page seventy-eight in our book, under Work First, we're showing something new for the first time, Emergency Assistance, forty-five thousand.
So that line was originally, the reason there's not a history there is because that line has been removed.
Okay.
So that, it was actually...
There's really no such thing as Work First Energy Assistance. It was mislabeled. It should have been a pan of emergency assistance, and it should have been under the Work First category.
Okay, so just...
What kind of money, what does this go for? It's emergency services, right?
Right, that's right. So it can be to help someone with their rent. This program is for people with children. So it could go to help people with their rent.
But it's also, I mean, it's supposed to encourage them to go ahead and get a job as quick as possible?
Yes, that's right.
It's an emergency until they get...
Yeah, I mean, there's a limit on how much they can receive. It's not an unlimited amount, yes.
Six hundred dollars a year.
On page seventy-seven, the equipment purchase, ninety-three thousand is, can you tell us what that is?
I sure can. Most of that is our computer equipment.
Okay.
It's a three-ten expenditure.
I mean, if it's all computer, that's fine.
It is, mostly.
On page seventy-eight, there's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars purchased meals.
That's part of that H C C B G funding.
Meals on Wheels, is that what it is?
And the congregate site. Those are, that's...
The congregate site, where is that?
That's on East Third Street. It's in the East Haven apartment building. There's like a little cafeteria area there in the bottom, and that's where our congregate site operates out of.
Who can come there and get food?
Anyone sixty or older is eligible to go.
I could go eat there.
Yes, sir.
Now, with that, with that, they do, there is a, they are required to accept donations and to put that out there and make that known, so...
Yes.
So people, and we do receive...
We request donations and contributions, however, we can't require, you know, you give a contribution.
We do receive some funding.
We do.
We're not. People are trying to say, I'm trying to help, you know?
Yeah, a lot of times, people come to that congregate site. I mean, there's little money jars on the table, and they'll just put their...
How many days a week does that operate?
Five days a week.
Monday through Friday?
I mean, with the exception of holidays, they operate on our schedule. So if we're closed for a holiday, then the congregate site's closed as well.
So no free meals?
There are free, they are free meals.
They say you got to make a donation.
A donation and a free meal. I mean, if you don't have to pay for it, it's free. I mean, that's the way it works.
Mr. Chairman?
They are free meals.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We do Meals on Wheels, Rotary does. I mean, there's a little envelope in there if you want to...
Yeah, they, I think those envelopes, they go out once a week to the ones that are, you know, that receive the meals at their home, and they'll put the money in the envelope, and then the volunteers will bring that back.
Going on that same page, page seventy-eight, there's a hundred, there's a ninety-four thousand dollar contract services, just below that hundred and thirty thousand.
That is the contract services for our contract with Goldenway for the in-home aides.
Oh, okay. But now you've had that contract, it looks like, well, you just started it a year or two ago, didn't you?
We did.
Okay.
Question on page seventy-nine in our book, foster care IV dash E. Was foster care dash IV or, I guess, four?
Four E.
Four E?
Title four E.
Title four E, okay.
Those are for our foster care board payments. So you'll see there's foster care state and foster care four E. There's different eligibility requirements for our foster kids, and so those two lines cover their board payments.
Okay. Last year, I think it was last year, we had some discussion that we were having to send foster children out of our county. Is that, has that...
We're working to decrease that. There's actually a foster care class going on right now, foster care licensing class going on right now. So we are working to decrease the number of children outside of our county.
That would be the money for both of those, whether it's in county or out of county?
It depends. There's an eligibility criteria for us to code to four E.
Okay.
So...
Ms. Chairman, the board funded that position last year, but it's taken them, because that person had to get trained up, then they had to start the process, so...
You've got to have more foster care families, I guess.
Our hope is that, you know, we knew this year, we weren't going to see a tremendous return out of that, but, because it was taking, getting ramped up, but hopefully next year we'll see an increase in that return.
Also, on page seventy-nine, when foster care drug test, seventy, seventy-two hundred dollars. Is everyone that's in foster care, are the parents drug tested on that?
No, not everyone. It would depend on why the children originally came into care. So if the reason they came into care had to do with substance use, the court could order drug testing.
For who?
The parents.
Okay, all right, I got you. Also on page seventy-nine, there's a six hundred and forty thousand dollar special assistance, about five or six lines from the top. What does that money go for?
That is for our Medicaid recipients who are in long-term care. That is the county portion of their special assistance.
We're required by law to pay a certain percentage.
Yes, sir.
And that's medic?
Assisted livings. That's for assisted livings.
Assisted living, not...
Not nurse, skilled nursing.
Not nursing homes.
Yes.
Assisted living. Okay, got you.
And there is a portion of that that goes to what they call S A in-home, and that's where a person can receive a payment to be maintaining their home.
Got you. Also on that same page, there's a two hundred and forty-one thousand down near the bottom, C I P crisis intervention program. If that question's already been asked, I apologize, but answer it again, please.
That's for our crisis intervention. That's the energy assistance payments.
Oh.
And that's based on state estimates.
Well, that says, energy assistance, L I E P, down below that is the same amount of money.
It is. It's a separate program, though. I mean, they're different programs. The L I E P is for the one-time payments in the winter. Like, they'll start in December for the elderly population, and then in January, that opens up everybody.
Now, come in and say, I can't pay it this month, and you say you're entitled to one month, and you pay it one month, or?
It's a one-time payment a year.
A L I E P is a one-time payment.
One-time payment. The other one is for hard cases that just keep coming back.
Heating and cooling-related emergencies. That's a hundred percent reimbursable, both of those are.
They're paid by the state?
Yes.
Well, that's actually federal.
Federal, okay, all right. Any other questions?
I've got one more.
All right, what page?
Page eighty, down toward the bottom, non-F S A M O E, a hundred thousand dollars.
Do you understand it better?
Right. So most commissioners are aware that we have to put in as much money in our Work First program as was put in in nineteen ninety-six. And several years ago, the county was not meeting M O E. It's called maintenance of effort. And if the county doesn't meet M O E, then the county's at risk of losing federal funds that we've been drawing down for worker salary and things like that. And so that was put in so to help us meet M O E, and that's for childcare if we need it, if we're not, it looks like we're not going to be.
Got you. I remember when we did that.
Was that your last?
That's my last. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know this is, you know it up one sign down the other, but I just, I took a three-hour course today, and they had all kinds of initials, and so now M O E stands for maintenance of effort.
Maintenance, yes.
Thank you. Public health.
So Jim's here, kind of the same, kind of the same thing. Jim has a lot of federal state programs that are working together, so he needs to answer any of your questions.
You can go, Senator. I don't got, I don't have any questions.
Really?
No, I'm just kidding.
I'd like to compliment you. I don't have a question, but I'd like to compliment you.
What's that?
You've got this statement in here, local funding comprises forty-four percent of the public health department's total proposed budget.
That's correct, sir.
That really helps me. I don't know about these other ones, knowing that percentage.
And that's been, that's pretty much standard. And that's the challenge when you're dealing with V S S and the health department, is you go in and start looking to try to cut stuff.
Yeah.
You can't go in and say, Jim, let's cut this. It's going to say, well, that's fine, but if you cut one dollar there, you're losing four dollars in safe funding. It doesn't make any sense to cut.
We've been through all of that. It's a nightmare. They've got it rigged so that they know what you're going to have, and they've rigged it that way, you're going to have a certain minimum program. They saw you coming, hood.
I'm a tricky man.
Do I? They saw you coming.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, under your full-time positions, are all of these considered to be county employees, or are you considered to be state employees?
Yeah, they are both, they're county employees, but they fall under the Office of State Human Resources.
So the forty-four is what we fund a hundred percent?
Uh, no, the state funds, federal funds fund that, but they're still considered county employees.
For personnel purposes, they're considered, uh, as part of the state, right?
That's correct, that's the retirement system, and, and also the, uh, appeals rights that they get once they're vested in.
That's right, but it's not mandated that we have so many employees.
Okay, when, and I don't, I took my sheet out, and I made a copy of it, and I left it in my copier in the office. Will we show all the number of employees, and we come up with a total? Are we using forty-four there, in that?
Yes, we should be.
Yeah.
It should be.
Yeah, okay, so it's a little bit misleading when we tell the public, we've got three hundred and seventy employees, we're, we're not to, technically paying for that, that whole, I mean, all of those forty-four employees?
Well, that's true in social services too, but those are employees that the county cuts a check for, and that are subject to most of our personnel policy, and like he says, when they're state employees, all they, they're getting is, they're entitled to certain, uh, procedures if there was a conflict on appeal, that's what they're getting. We have all of those employees, they're ours, regardless of who's sending us money to pay them.
Our job descriptions have to actually match what the state has for these, these positions, and that's one of the things that we have.
So Jim's drawing down money based on programs that fund those positions, and if he didn't have that program, he wouldn't have those positions.
Right.
Jim, you got, um, at the very bottom, you got insurance and bonds, tell me something about that.
Well, uh, because we do provide medical, uh, services, we have to have insurance, malpractice insurances.
That's straight through the health department. We don't, we don't.
The same, the same goes for, um, like, the environmental health folks, they have to have insurance to cover their actions.
How about bonds?
Well, I'm not even, I'm not sure what the bonds are.
Did you find out for me?
I will.
Thank you.
On page ninety-five, about, almost, about four lines from the bottom, it's twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for professional service medical, what is that service?
All right, which one is that?
Uh, go about four lines, go to the right-hand column, and go up, the one, two, three, or the fourth one, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand?
Yeah.
That would be, uh, for the nurse practitioner we have, and she's not an employee, so she gets paid out of that line. Also, uh, we have a medical director, who gets paid out of that line, and we have backup nurse practitioner for when the, um, when our midwife, our nurse midwife, she takes off for a couple of weeks, and we have to have a contract to bring somebody in to provide this service, that, that's what that all adds up to.
Okay, so how much time is this person spending with jail inmates, then? I mean, twenty-seven thousand?
That's, that's, that's just her time in the Healthy Living Clinic, I'm sorry, that's jail, I'm sorry, that's jail.
That's jail, that's jail.
I was looking at the wrong one, my bad.
Page ninety-five.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just looking at the wrong one, I thought I was looking at Healthy Living. So that would be her time there, it would also be, uh, PRN nursing that we have as well. It also would cover, um.
Then you got the two up top staffers that you're paying eighty-four thousand, so you have two full-time nurses and then the, the practitioner, part-time.
That's correct, the two nurses are up there in that, uh, as salaries, because they are county employees.
Right.
And I could, I could break down the professional service for you.
No, that's okay, that's close enough, that'll be. Now.
Excuse me, go ahead.
No, you go ahead. Uh, the, over on page ninety-six, you got about, one, two, three, four lines up from the bottom, you got a hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, professional service medical, under the Healthy Living Clinic. And then we've got, above that, we've got nurses that we're paying, so what's, why is that so high, and what are they doing?
The, well, we have three nurses total between Healthy Living Clinic and Jail Health, so two of those nurses are split up with twenty, twenty or twenty-five percent of their pay in Healthy Living Clinic, the rest of it's in Jail Health. Then we have the, uh, third position, which is mostly funded through Healthy Living Clinic, so that's her salary. So it's, between the two of them, those cover the three nurses.
Yeah, but the hundred and fourteen thousand is a separate line item, professional services medical.
Right, that would cover the, um, that would cover the nurse practitioner in Healthy Living Clinic, her portion of that, if she was working forty hours a week.
So the one that goes to the jail is working in this department, too?
She works both areas.
But she's making, according to this, she's making about a hundred and fifty a year.
That's close, not just her, though, it's also the, her supervisor cost, um, like I said, I can break that down for you better, I'm just not really prepared on everything that makes a professional service, but I can get it.
This particular department of Healthy Living, we're, we, what services are we providing to the public under Healthy Living?
Okay, now, also think, um, that we're budgeted for forty hours, but we're not doing a full forty hours. Right now, we're only doing it one day a week, so this is built in for us to expand if we need, we're gonna look at it over the next two, next three years, and, so, we're not sure that we'll ever get to forty hours, but we're budgeted at forty hours. Revenue and the, uh, cost for those are balanced each other out, so there's no county dollars that's involved in this, outside of the, what's lined under Jail Health, which is, because that's funded by the hundred and fifty thousand dollars over there.
Where does that other revenue come from, then?
Fees and services.
We charge people for it.
Medicaid, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, those kind of folks, yes.
Well, we, we've got a lot of people there, I mean, it looks to me like they got two days a week that don't have anything to do.
I'm not sure of that, but.
Well, you know, if you look at the time they spend in the jail, looking at prisoners, and then you look at one day a week for the same crew doing Healthy Living, uh, do they spend four days servicing the jail? The answer is no.
They are over in the jail quite a bit, the two nurses are.
Four full days?
Yeah, right now, they are, right now, they're covering weekends, too, and nights.
Do we keep up with their time, that they're in the jail?
Yes, we do.
Can you get me their time cards?
Yes.
Yeah, I like them for the last five or six months.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much. Next one is Veterans.
Page, one of the three is Veteran Services, um, that's the single-person department, Karen Melman, um, and that budget is down about two hundred bucks, two hundred and fifty bucks. She provides, um, services to our veterans, forty hours a week.
How many?
Forty hours a week, eight to five, Monday through Friday.
And, and, word, that's in the Highland Drive.
It is, it's over by the.
Board of Lash, I got it. Your nun, uh, the next one, Brian?
Uh, Area Mental Health and Transportation, page one oh five, so as we go through that, um, there are multiple pieces in here, and, um, we start off actually, and, and let me introduce you to Elena Cameron, um, she is not Chris, but she is the, she is now the CEO, um, at BCDC, um, and was formerly their, their Finance Director, Finance, so. So she is now in charge over there, and, and came tonight, um, so to kind of learn the process and, and go through it. So these are items like BATS, you'll see, BATS is the one that's up, fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and that, and that's the second year of the two-year funding agreement that the board put in place. They made the first last year, and you made the increase this year, and then that levels out, that was the agreement you made with, uh, with BCDC last year to, uh, to help, to help decrease the subsidy that BCDC was putting in place to cover BATS.
So the total for the two years was a hundred and five?
Mm-hmm, so we, we've reached that level on this budget, and, and we'll go from there, so.
Um, Trillium Health, uh, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm familiar with Trillium, but is this money that, that is allocated to the mental health, and then they, they transfer that money to other, other organizations?
Trillium, Trillium is like a, is like a broker, um, they receive funding from all the counties in their catchment area, and then they contract with providers to provide care, so they are like the big insurance company. They get the money, and, and you come in and say, I need this, they say, okay, you go here, and they take care of the, paying for that, with the funds they receive.
The NC DOT rule grant eighty thousand dollars, who, who gets, who, where does that money wind up?
BATS.
BATS gets that.
See, this is one of the complaints I have about BATS, not that they're not doing a great job, the county is getting soaked, the taxpayers are getting soaked on this stuff, and, you know, BATS can charge people for riding their buses, and the county doesn't have to subsidize people riding for free and all this sort of thing, and I see you, Winston, we got the same thing from Chris, and all this stuff, but this is, this is nothing in the world but socialized transportation, and it's, it's just that simple. BATS was originally started, funded by the state, in order to have local area transit, not local area transit for people that go to the doctor and that sort of thing, and I don't fault what you're doing, what you're doing is good work, it's just that the taxpayer shouldn't be soaked for this. And then alcohol treatment, where does that check wind up? Eighteen thousand?
It goes to Trillium.
Trillium gets that, okay, CIP Passages?
That is, um, that is a grant that pass, that comes through us, um, it's a reimbursement grant. Passages does their counseling work, they submit to the state, and the state sends us the money, and we give it Passages.
What is Passages?
It is a counseling service.
Alcohol, drug?
It's a counseling service, psychologist run it?
Um, psychologists or masters in social work, or something like that.
It's a, it's a business, it's not a, it's not a government agency.
That's correct.
Okay.
But it, but it's, it's, it's flow-through money that comes from the state, it's not county dollars, it just, it has to flow through a local government.
Got you.
Anyone else? Okay. Community Services, Cooperative Extension.
So the Cooperative Extension piece, of course, y'all know how all that works, we, the, we have that agreement with, with NC State and also with, um.
ANT.
ANT, where they have folks, um, so our total there is two fifty, it's a little less than what it was last year, which was two fifty-two. Answer any questions we can. They provide multiple programs, you know, they do the four H's, they have the agriculture, and horticultural agent, um, and, and we're sharing, I think we're sharing a physician.
With Hi.
With Hi, yeah, so.
You, but you may not know the answer to this, Hood may know. Um, how many, how many acres is in the piece of property out there where the county owns, where that building is? Do you, do you know where the extension office is?
Oh, the extension off, oh, we got that from the airport.
Is it two acres?
It would be two, it would be, I would say about two acres, it was no more than what was needed to build the building and build the parking lot, as I recall.
So there's, there's not additional space to build, like a livestock arena?
I don't, I don't think there's enough room out there to do that, yeah, I mean, you, the airport's got plenty of land, though, they could, you know, they can give you a lease for a livestock arena, if they want to.
Actually, you can't.
They can't, because of security, because of?
No, because it's not airport-related stuff, that's why, that's why we had to get rid, we had to move the gardeners out of there.
Oh, really?
Okay.
When the FAA came down, when we redid the plan, when we redid our FAA plan, when I was there at the city, the FAA came down and said.
Wow, I wondered why you moved the gardeners.
You can't have that here, it's not airport-related stuff.
What does soil and water have to do with airports?
Well, that's a deed, that's a deeded piece of property, yeah, that's, that was taken, you know, they can deed you a piece of property, and you can take and do, do what he's talking about, but you probably still have to have the FAA approve it.
Any more questions, extension, we're down to soil and water conservation, Anne, you want to step up to the mic? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Anne's, Anne, you can see Anne's budget, um, this stuff a total of four hundred bucks, I think, so. They have done some, they've done a lot of good work this year with, um, getting grants for stream cleanout.
Beavers.
Chasing beavers, all sorts of stuff, so. But they've been very fortunate in being able to receive those, unfortunately, you know, unfortunately, a lot of that money gets put out there when there are hurricanes, so we just assume not getting any of that money and not having any hurricanes, but, uh, but, uh, but we take what we can get.
Well, the trees wouldn't blow in, so that, but the beavers are still there, they're still a problem.
We're trying to unionize them, see if we can get them to, control their work hours.
And for the person who wrote the, or called in on Sandoff?
Oh, but, I don't know.
The money that goes to the drainage districts is controlled by a separate board, it's not controlled by the commissioners.
Talk to your local drainage boards.
Yes, yes, I think each one of them has three, is it three members?
Yeah, I think so.
It's three members. Any questions of Anne O'Brien? Thank you, Anne.
So page one fifteen is youth, is youth services. So youth services, uh, the JCPC program, um, that is the program that y'all have already talked about, and, and it's the, the diversion program, where they have, where they have agencies that are doing work with, with youth, to try to keep them out of the system. You, you receive a total of a hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars from the state for that program, and then you're required to match it, the counties are required to match it at ten percent, so that local match is fifteen thousand two thirty-nine, and that totals up to the one sixty-seven, six twenty-eight, so we receive that money from the state, um, and then, and it gets divvied out to those agencies that are, that are approved under the, um, JCPC program.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I didn't, the, uh, any of this money that they get from JCPC, none of that goes to Boys and Girls Club, does it? I didn't hear in that other day.
Oh, no, it's not in their current, no, sure.
So that, what, where is Cornerstone located, I see?
It's out there on two sixty-four by Hall Haven.
What, what do they do?
It's a pathing program, something like that.
Okay.
Very good program.
Yeah, they open that up, um, they, they open it up for agencies to come in, request funding, they go through a process, and, and, and they decide who they want to fund, the, the JCPC board, and you have members, um, you've got, I think Commissioner Bren sits on the JCPC board. The, uh, the next piece is the Boys and Girls Club, um, that is forty thousand dollars, it's a difference of ten, because last year, you funded them ten thousand one-time, so that backed out, it's not part of continuation when it's a one-time funding, so they're back to forty in this one, um, then there's two thousand for Pambalco House, for a total of two oh nine, six twenty-eight. So that's the difference.
No questions? Okay?
Outside agencies is on page one seventeen, you'll see that is the same funding as prior year. Any additional funding requests that come from the existing agencies, or any new requests for funding from agencies that are not already in there, are shown on your service expansion list. If you look on the second page on one eighteen, you'll see where they may have requested something, like, uh, right at the start, you'll see Aurora Recreation. They were awarded forty-five hundred dollars last year, they requested seven thousand this year, but we only put in there forty-five hundred. The remaining piece of that is gonna go as a service expansion for you to look at and decide whether you want to give them more money or not, but we haven't increased any of those, and we haven't added anybody. Now, there's one in here that is on the sheet in the back, but it's not listed on page one eighteen, it's the PS Gems Alumni Association for TV Park. They requested. They requested five thousand dollars. So they, if you go right under the Greater Bath Foundation and write in PS Gems Alumni, BB Park, and then put five thousand under requested and zero under recommended, you will see them if you go to page one seventy-two, there at the very bottom. We just, we just, they came in, they came in at the end, and we got them on the, we got them on the service expansion list, but we missed them. So you, you'll, you'll be seeing all of those folks Tuesday night. And I think, I think we figured if everybody spent five minutes talking, we'd be out of here in three hours.
Did we, do we have a limit on those?
A limit on what?
On the amount of time they spent up here?
We told them to keep it between three and five minutes, because five minutes puts you at three hours.
Okay. I'm, I'm assuming last year we had a few people didn't show?
Well, and, and ours will, will, it won't take us five minutes to explain some of these, like, you know, the cola pieces and...
These people are coming in on Tuesday?
Just like we did last year, same kind of setup.
Okay.
There'll be a crowd, I promise you.
Higher Heights is on here, twenty thousand.
Yes, sir.
If, if the county chooses to deed that property to them?
Yes, sir.
Are they, will they pay taxes on that property?
If you deeded it to them, they would, yes, sir.
They would pay taxes?
They're nonprofit.
They're five oh one C three.
They would file us a nonprofit.
That's right.
Yeah.
Sorry. That's right, they would, you're right.
So there'd be no tax revenue at all?
We need to get her to send us their last audit, because we got into this one time before, and we found out all of their money was going for salaries. We just need to see where their money's going.
And while we're on that one, I don't know whether you can give me some direction. I, I was a little bit, wasn't completely sure where we were going last time. And, and the way I was gonna bring it back to you at the next board meeting, you said bring it back to you at the next board meeting. I was gonna bring you three opportunities on that. First one was transfer the property, second one was a ten-year lease, and then the third one was file notice of closing out the contract. Is that what you want me to do, or you just want me to bring the transfer of the property? I, I really wasn't sure where y'all wanted to go with that.
Well, we don't, me, Mr. Chairman, me personally, I don't know if you, if you, if you, if you filed notice of counseling the contract, what would, what would cause the council to contract? What have she done? Has she violated any?
Well, she's on, she's on a month-to-month lease right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Month-to-month lease.
Right, your, your lease was for a, you're...
We was up.
For a set amount of time, and it said that, once you're done with it, then...
It's month-to-month.
It becomes month-to-month, but you've still gotta give a sixty-day notice. So that would be one thing you could do. Or you could, or you could renegotiate and do another lease, up to, up to ten years.
I got you.
If you wanted to. You know, you can either say, no, we're done with that.
Anyway, you look at it, the one is, the one is dead that we, that we was in, in, in front of her the first ten years, so that lease is over.
Oh, it wasn't, it wasn't actually a ten year.
It was a three-year lease.
It was a three and a...
Three years.
Three and a...
It's been renewed.
Three and a two, and three and a five.
I got you. Didn't she say that, that if, if they took, you know, a lease, they couldn't get any grant money?
She said that if they continued the lease, the, the funders that they were talking with wanted them to own the property.
Right.
So you want me to bring all three of those back? You just want me to bring the lease and the, I just...
Well, what I would do is, I would, you know, we, we slipped into this, we never should've gotten into this, but we've eased our way into it, and I think we're in over our head right now. The only thing that serves her purpose is to get title to the property. Everything else is a waste of time for her. If you want to deed her the property with the rescission clause in it, I'll vote for that. But I, but I think we need to take this twenty thousand dollars, because we're giving them a piece of property that's worth, you know, and they can use it to borrow money, they can use it to get grants, so we're helping them tremendously. That gets us out of this altogether.
Well, and that would have to be, the statute allows you to transfer the property with it, it has to have a reversion clause in it.
Yeah.
So there has to be a reversion clause in there.
Yeah. I, I, I favor the transfer, but I really would like to leave the twenty in there and let them write us a check back for the twenty, for the...
To buy the property?
To buy the property.
I don't think, I don't think...
No, I don't think you can do that.
Can't do that? Okay.
If that's the case, you'll have to upset me.
No, yeah, you'd, you'd have to.
All right, all right. Well, I, I...
If you give them the twenty and let them buy it back, the rescission part of it is dead.
Well, I guess my question is, what are we gonna do with it if we get it thrown back at us?
If you get it thrown, if you get it back, then I think there are some folks who are expressed some interest in buying it.
Buying it, okay.
Oh, yeah, we can sell that property, if, you know, that's why we never should've gotten into this to begin with, but we sort of eased into it with helping her to begin. I was on the board with helping her to begin with, and then it went along and along and along. And the last time that we looked at it, what they were doing with their money was, it was all going to salaries. And we told them they needed to straighten their act up, or we were, we're gonna drop the lease. And then they did straighten their act up, because they rehabbed that one building that they're using for an office. So, you know, we've sort of slid into something, again, with public property we never should've gotten into. And the way, I think the way out of it, I'll vote for deed her the property and taking the twenty thousand, because we've helped them, but a lot more than twenty thousand dollars when you deed them the property.
I, I, I like, I like Hood's idea.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's the way to go.
Okay, well, we'll put that, I mean, that's easy for us to do, and, and we just have to make a, there's a part of the statute, we do a public notification afterwards, it's kind of weird to do it afterwards. But we'll, that's just what I need to know from y'all, because I was a little confused on whether you want to do that or do a lease, but I'm, I'm hearing you clear.
Well, if the majority of board's willing to do it that way, I don't need that information I asked for. You can forget about, you know, books or, or...
Okay.
We don't need that.
Okay.
I don't need it myself, unless somebody else does.
Is anybody different from...
Okay. Very good, that helps me, thank you.
Okay, Economic Development.
Martin's here.
Best for last.
And Martin's budget is five, eight, eight dollars more than it was last year. So Martin says he'll write you a check.
Yeah, eight dollars more. We take cash.
How do you get eight dollars? Why didn't make it just ten?
Eight dollars?
How about changing the utilities by ten dollars?
Yeah.
You're a good salesman, Martin.
Uh, no questions?
Well, I've, I've got a couple of questions, it won't take but a minute. The skills center rent, we're paying rent to the committee of one hundred for the building, right?
It's equal to the, the mortgage.
Yeah, so we're, we're buying the building for them, is what we're really doing. All right, and then, then the skills center utilities, that's the utilities for the whole building. If somebody's in the back doing something in the shop area, those, that includes the utilities for that, too.
What we, what we did was we set, there is somebody back there now, Sound Metal Solutions? And, yeah, sorry. Sound Metal Solutions is using the back. What we did was we set a baseline, going back over historic utility usage, and then anything above that usage, they're paying and reimbursing.
Oh, okay. Martin, the community college is not using any of that?
Not anymore, no.
Okay.
So we're hoping, currently, the, the business back there has a couple of people working, and hopefully it'll go to four, and then they'll get out and maybe have many more.
Now, that building's for sale.
The industry-ready building is for sale.
Oh, there was a sign out front that said building for sale or something? It's not the skills center that's for sale, it's the industry-ready building.
Right, yes.
Yeah, the skills, we still have five or six years left on that?
Two thousand, twenty-three, yeah.
Or otherwise, otherwise we've got to split it with...
EDA.
EDA.
EDA, yeah. Martin, what do you, what do you spend fifteen thousand dollars a year on contract services?
On contract services? That could be true.
Could be engineers.
Yeah, could be.
Okay, so that, basically, that is various, some of that is data, like we have site location partnership that gives us leads, site to do business, which gives us data and graphics. Our photocopier contract is about eight hundred dollars a month, which is where we've moved money out of printing, and pretty much we don't print anything anymore through a printer. We do all our brochures and what have you from the copier. Also, we do Dropbox and Basecamp, which help us communicate with our clients.
Thank you.
On, on the industry-ready building?
Right.
Have we, have we ever done, taken a drone and gone across the top and put it on the website to give it a look?
We're in the process of doing that. The, a client actually did that for themselves, and then they sent me the footage of that, and so I'm gonna edit it down, it was quite a bit of footage. It was an Israeli company, and it's very high-quality footage, so...
Is that the same one that went to Bell Haven?
Yes.
Because they were doing it there at the Cooper's.
Right, and I have that aerial drone footage as well. And even the, the battle with the, the eagles, that was pretty crazy.
Thank you very much, unless, was there another question? Down to planning, Brian?
So this is the planning department, and you'll see where we went from seven to three. We moved the three employees and land records, for land records employees over to the tax assessor's office. We have the contract with COG for planning services, and we still have the inspections running there, so that's why you see that decreasing.
Any questions of Brian on planning and inspections? We've got down to the educational tab, is that where you said we were going tonight?
Yes, sir.
We still have three positions in planning?
You do. Well, they're inspectors.
Yeah.
They're straight out with transfers.
It was moved over there to start with.
There were three, there were three land records people that went over.
They went over, okay, those are the three.
There's the chief inspector, inspector...
So that two, that's the two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars to go to the tax assessor's office.
Something like that. Whatever the numbers were, and we've got the three people.
Why was it four hundred and some odd thousand dollars last year?
You had a planner in there.
Four sixty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we picked up, I know we probably picked up thirty thousand dollars outsourcing that to the COG on that one position.
It's not just the salaries, the, all the benefit, it went along with it. If, if nobody else has any questions or comments, we have our next one on Monday night. It starts at five o'clock, and it'll be a continuation starting with education and go through the enterprise fund, which is water and solid waste, and...
So you'll do, you'll do education, public safety, we'll talk about special revenues, water, soup, I mean, water and solid waste.
Good night, and we'll see you Monday night.